Good evening again, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and we have a public hearing scheduled for 6:00. Mr. County Administrator, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is the first and only hearing to consider an amendment to the Southwood Development DRI Development Order. The item requests the Board conduct the first and only public hearing to consider the approval of an amendment to the Southwood Development Regional Impact Integrated Development Order, which requires approval of both the county and the city commissions. This amendment, if approved, would allow multiple changes to the master plan, to update the land use conversion tables for transportation impacts, it revised mitigation options for affordable housing, it updates statutory references in the DRI DO to ensure consistency with current Florida statutes, and it updates the master stormwater plan. This public hearing is quasi-judicial in nature. I do have one speaker card on behalf of the applicant, but let me turn it over to the county attorney for guidance because it is quasi-judicial.
Thank you. So just for the, just to remind the Board, since this is quasi-judicial, if any of you have engaged in any expertise communications that were not previously disclosed and made a part of the record, need to do so now at the beginning of the public hearing before there's any debate and before there's a vote. Attachment number four to this agenda item was released and issued earlier today because Commissioner O'Keefe had received some expertise communications and he disclosed those. Those were posted and provided to the clerk to be made a part of the record. But did any of the other commissioners have any expertise communications to disclose at this time?
I had none.
Okay, thank you.
And I should have mentioned, Madam Chair, upon thorough staff evaluation, which you will find in the analysis section of the item, we're recommending option one. But first, we've got one speaker on this item, Ray Greer.
Good evening. I'm Ray Greer. My address is 2910 Cary Forest Parkway, Tallahassee, Florida. I am the applicant's representative. Just wanted to mention that what we're doing here today is really taking the Southwood DRI. We're, it's been around for over 20 years. We're going through cleaning up some of the items. You had mentioned we've had a lot of changes in the statute. We've had a lot of changes in the Southwood development since it was originally permitted and planned and developed. And as it continues to develop, what we're trying to do is better position it to go through build-out. As we're looking now, we're looking towards the end of the development. We want to just make sure that we get it positioned correctly so we will meet the market needs for the future. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Again, Madam Chair, we are recommending option one and we have no further speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, move by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Minor. Is there any discussion?
I've got one question. I don't know if it's related to this right here, but I've been reading a little bit about the sewer overflow. Does anybody have any information on the sewer overflow at the city?
Recently in Southwood.
Yeah. And is that integrated within this measure? And how does the impact of Southwood and all of that right there? I'm curious, very curious about it because the word "Southwood" and sewer overflow continues to come up periodically.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Sure. I would ask anyone from Public Works or DSCM if they have any information on that. I do know they are in the process, the city is in the process of upgrading some of their systems in the vicinity of Southwood. I know there's systems that serve the development, but does anybody have anything further? If not, I see, that's okay. If not, we can make sure we provide an update to the Board.
I just think that if the city has permitted, they've been annexed into, they shouldn't be treated like the Southside. They need to be given the infrastructure to accommodate the housing demand, the growing commercial demand, the continuing residential demand. The pipes need to be put in the ground if that's what they require. And the pumps or the relay stations need to be set there. And it frustrates me to think that this area, simply because it has the word "south" in front of it, that that's the reason for it to be neglected. I am pushing for and suggesting that whatever it takes to alleviate that community from having the constant repeated failures of sewer, that needs to be resolved because it keeps happening to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. No other comments. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Thank you unanimously, Mr. County Administrator, item 21.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 21, request the Board to conduct the second and final public hearing on the proposed 2024 cycle text amendments to the Leon County, Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider the adoption of three proposed text amendments that address new statutory requirements regarding sanitary sewer, the allowance of solar facilities in agricultural areas is approved by the state legislature, and an update to the process for adopting small-scale amendments to the comp plan. With that, I will hand it over to Susan or Artie. I don't know if you all have a presentation or if you're just available for questions, but we are recommending options one, two, and three, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners?
I got one question to ask.
I'd like to hear a motion first before we get into discussion. Commissioners, and the recommendation is option one, I believe. Thank you. Move by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Minor. Okay, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. Commissioners, sometime, you've heard me say, and I don't know when it's coming, if it's coming, but this, we need to change the rural policy of one house per 10 acres. And I have thought that that is a very high bar in as if property and land availability in coming years, we will have the luxury to maintain one house per 10 acres. And, Mr. Commissioner, I don't know how to maybe make this, but I'd like to see and ask if the majority of this commission is willing to visit the rural, changing it from one and 10 to one and three. Currently, you cannot build a home under those areas that we designate as rural, except for you have 10 acres. You have 10 acres to build one house. I'd like to see that go to one house on three acres if rural can occur. So what would I need to do that at some point before I retire, we actually have a real discussion consideration?
I'll ask Artie to respond. He can bring us up to speed on where the review of the land use element is and if there's an opportunity there. And I know some of that material will be coming back to the Board and some of those recommendations soon, so Artie with that?
Absolutely. The county administrator is correct. We currently have a consultant who is doing a lot of data analysis. They're kind of crunching the numbers right now. They've done some public engagement. They'll be doing more public engagement and will be bringing back their findings for your consideration. And part of that is evaluation of the land use categories, including the rural land use category.
Say it again, Artie. I mean, could you, what I'm asking about is not, I'm asking for consideration of one house on three. So in those options that you bring back in the aggregate of options that we look at the whole waterfront, please make one and three also one of the options that we look at for rural designation.
We can have the consultant look at that and bring back the recommendations.
I'm not talking about the consultant. I ain't talking about him. I want one and three acre consideration. This county commission's elected to set policy, and I don't need a consultant. I'm a commissioner. I want an option. Well, these other people believe that or not, that's their prerogative. I'm a commissioner. I want one house per three acres in the rural to be considered. You can vote it down. Kind of reminds me of being a Democrat elected 28 years and unable to have my name placed on a ballot to be a delegate to the Democratic Convention. Just put my name on there, should qualify after 28 years of elected Democrat. But when you can't get the consideration on a sheet of paper as one of those recommended items, that pisses me off. That's what I want to see occur.
Understood.
So are you requesting an agenda item?
I am. Well, when he brings it, there'd be a plethora of what he just said. I heard him say, yes, he said a lot of mumbo jumbo. But in that mumbo jumbo, that's what ought to be an element.
Okay, just for clarification, Mr. County Administrator, the report is, will it be coming back? Do we need a motion for? It'll be coming back.
Yeah, just to clarify, Artie, when did you say it'd be coming back?
We're working with a consultant now to finish up the data analysis and then we'll kind of schedule when it comes back. I don't have a specific date at the moment based on the data analysis, but it should be fairly soon.
On point, Madam Chair.
Yes, please, Commissioner Matt.
Commissioner Proctor, I understand you're passionate, want to see one and three, but I'm thinking with Barry and what you're saying is that they're bringing back analysis of what, given the current environment, what should be considered within each layer of development within a county, correct?
That's correct.
And within that, I guess we could ask for analysis of one to three in the rural area, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. I don't think there's any disrespect towards you, Commissioner Proctor, but I think the man, I think to ask for that analysis is fair. And within the rural area, we've had a conversation a whole bunch of times and we've packed this chamber out with folks looking to protect the rural nature of our rural areas in Leon County. And so I don't disagree at all with having the analysis in there, but I just didn't want you to think, Commissioner Proctor, that Barry was trying to sidestep the fact that that's something that you want. And we have to be, now, if, when that analysis comes back, if we so choose moving in a different direction than our consultant, they don't agree with this, then that's on us. But I don't think there's any problem with asking for the analysis, but I do understand that Barry is not in any way trying to say that your opinion as a commissioner is not as valid as the assessment done by whatever consultant that we have done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let me hear from our county administrator.
I think too, just to add, just a quick point to that too, I think we probably should have been clear from the beginning that we do have previous direction from this commission to bring this back as part of that evaluation.
All I'm saying, Madam Chair, is that this staff has vigorously protected this zoning over the years. I know it has. And it creates problems. You remember Mrs. Gibson that we met with three, four weeks ago? We got about, God, 27, 25 acres. 25 acres could be busted twice. 25 acres you can't put with two houses on. And this is an asphyxiating problem that is suffocating families with 25, 27 acres and they can't break it up. And our staff has vigorously, our planning department has vigorously protected this. Now, it's got to be some areas where we don't have a universal rural designation that that one big rural is a blanket death penalty on all areas. We've got to give some breathing room in areas called rural, and it can't be this draconian policy right now. People are suffering, land value is going up, dirt is very pricey, and if folk could break this 10 acres up, they could have some money in their pocket, significant. There'd be leverage for them at a bank. But right now, the force, 10 acres for one house is an exorbitant standard. I mean, this would probably be laughed at and chuckled out of, I mean, San Francisco, you know, Los Angeles, Houston. You don't get this no place. This is a state capital. But this is as not Mayberry. And we've got to let go of, in protecting folk who have been the landlords, if you will, the lords over the land, the land barons for up the dump years. And this is killing the smaller owners of property, but not the land barons. I won't call their names, but you know them. And everybody else has to live at that level, those people who have hundreds of acres and people who have less than 100 acres. You have 100 acres. What we're talking about on 100 acres, you can build 10 houses. That's what this policy does. 100 acres, you only get 10 houses. One house per 10 acres. That's stupid. I want to see this change in my lifetime, not after my time. This needs to change. It needs to be relaxed. There's got to be some air somewhere. We got to get more than one house per 10 acres. 100 acres give us 10 houses. It's 21st century. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I want to go back to the motion. Just for clarification, Commissioner Maddox, staff recommendation is options one, two, and three. Okay, that was your motion option, one, staff recommendation. Okay, great, great. No other comments. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. It passes. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I think we are back now to our agenda. We're back at agenda item number 17.
Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioners. Item number 17 is a status update on the Southside Action Plan. The item provides a history of the Southside Action Plan, including an overview of the phases of the plan, the corresponding June 23 amendment to the Leon County Comprehensive Plan, and the action projects that have been implemented through a combination of public and private investments through the southern, through southern Leon Counties. You might recall, Commissioners, we canceled the workshop last month due to the tornadoes. We're providing this status report for you here today. Our planning staff is here, prepared to do a presentation and answer any questions that you might have. And with that, Artie, I'll hand it off to you.
I'd like to move our acceptance of this report, Madam Chair.
Let's hear their report first, Commissioner Proctor.
Okay, very well.
We have no speakers, right?
We have one. We do have one speaker on this item. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, it's my pleasure to give the annual update on the Southside Action Plan. I think you're going to be very excited about the amount of investment, which is over a billion dollars, going into the Southside. When we talk about the Southside Action Plan, this is the area where we're looking at investments. These are, this is the map of the Southside Action Plan area that's adopted into our comprehensive plan. And as the county administrator mentioned, this is based on comp plan amendments that were adopted about a year ago, so June 2023. The process to replace the, what we used to call the Southern Strategy Area, which had been in place since 1998, was initiated in January of 2021 with the specific purpose to ensure that Tallahassee's Southside offers the same amenities, services, and quality of life that the community envisions for the area. And as I mentioned, when we look at it, we're happy to report that of the projects that are currently active or just very recently completed, we're looking at $1.13 billion in the Southside. This ranges from major construction projects like the International Processing Center at the Tallahassee International Airport, the Southside Transit Center. This is looking at transportation projects, the widening of roads, building of sidewalks, trails. It's looking at investments in affordable housing. It's also looking at a lot of private investments that occurred in this area as well. Just for brevity, I'll highlight a couple of those, but the agenda materials actually cover a lot more in detail. So when we kind of look at this, one of the first projects is the Tramp Road Trail. This is a pretty significant trail in that it provides additional connectivity connecting Fairview Middle School to the St. Mark's Trail, to different neighborhoods, and to the Jack McClain Community Center. We're looking at things like the Magnolia Trail. This is a project that is managed by Leon County, funded by Blueprint, and is currently under construction. The widening of Capital Circle Southwest, which represents $220 million in the Southside. The Blueprint IA Board approved the master plan for the fairgrounds, and this sets Blueprint up for investing $30 million in beautifications and improvements to the fairgrounds property. No, back in February, we spent a lot of time talking about this project and the subject of sewer projects, but just highlighting this, $20 million to extend central water and sewer to everyone who lives in the Southside Triangle. Projects like the subject sewer that I mentioned, you know, $10 million investment that extends sewer service to over 300 properties there inside the Southside Action Plan area. These two are not included in that 1.13 million because they're outside the Southside Action Plan area, but I think they're important to note just because they're adjacent to the Southside Action Plan area, and that's the subject of sewer for Northeast Munson as well as what's going on in Woodville. There's a lot of private investment and development as well. Danfoss has had multiple expansions over the years, one kind of going on right now. But this really represents creating high-paying jobs on the Southside. Things like the North Florida Innovation Labs, this is going to provide wet labs, dry labs, biological science space, prototyping and fabrication space, and really going to serve as an incubator for businesses, and it's located in Innovation Park on the Southside. Retail commercial things like Somo Walls, which is going to open up later this month, are occurring in this area. Lot of investments in affordable housing, things like the Columbia Gardens at South City, the Ridge Road Multifamily, and the Jackson Forest Apartments there on Jackson Bluff Road, all represent significant investments in affordable housing in this area. And when we look at just development in general, there's a lot going on. We can tell from the permits, there's 138 active permits as of the time this material was published. 116 of those are residential permits, representing 704 residential units, so we do see residential occurring on the Southside. 22 non-residential permits, you know, pretty significant amount of non-residential square footage going on right now with active permits. The county has a strategic initiative to support annexations on the Southside, and we kind of see that happening now. So this is, within the past couple of years, we've seen 541.3 acres annexed into the city. If you look at what that allows, that's over 10,000 residential units that could occur, get built here. And these are either within or basically adjacent to the Southside Action Plan area. Again, the materials cover a lot more information, a lot more details, but it's pretty significant that in this first annual update of the Southside Action Plan, I'm bringing you 1.13 billion with a B dollars in investment on the Southside. And it doesn't stop. This is just the very first of an annual update that you'll get on the Southside Action Plan area. So we know that planning and public investment stimulates private sector investment, and so we hope to continue to seeing that, maybe next time even more of those active permits, continued collaboration between the public and private sector. We'll keep tracking all of the information so we can bring you these updates on an annual basis, and we'll look forward to that. And the recommended action is option one, which is accept the status report on the Southside Action Plan.
Madam Chair, we have one speaker, Stanley Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Madam Chair, for the record in my remarks, my address is 1010 Silver Ridge Drive. That's where I live, right there behind Jake Aitken Park on the Southside. Why I stayed for this is because somehow, not a fault of staff, we've got a Southside Action Plan that I don't feel like I'm a part of that. What I mean by that? When I travel in my neighborhood on the northeast side, I have a very nice shopping center that I can go to, two or three restaurants, multiple shopping centers, ice cream parlors. You have that in Southwood. But if you come out of Southwood on the Southside, you don't have that anymore. And what I want to see about a Southside Action Plan, I want to see how can we develop this fairground that would make people come out of their houses, buy ice creams, and drop guns? When I'm looking at this South plan, I want to see some amenities, which there are. We have an improved bus terminal. That's going to help with the moving people around over on the Southside. We have affordable housing coming online. Well, hell, we need more than just somewhere to ride the bus and eat. We want some fun stuff. Can we get an indoor pickleball? Can we get a race, a fun station for these children to go to? Can we get some of these 850s that's over, right off of, you know, I'm over on northeast side, they got it all and going on? I want some of that stuff. And Artie's my friend and I like him, but I want a situation where I'm on the northeast side of town and there's something on the Southside that's going to make me drive over there. For years, if I've been growing up, I've been driving over to the Northside for entertainment, over to the Northside to go to Applebee's. I just want some of that stuff to come over there. And I get, yeah, we've got heartaches, but I ain't fussing, I'm just fussing.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, will entertain a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Matt.
So, first things first, I was calling you Barry a minute ago, Artie, wasn't I? I think I was, wasn't I? I'm sorry, Artie. It's been a long day.
I like Ray, he's a nice guy.
I was like, damn, I was calling. So, all this is great. $1 billion of investment is an amazing thing. What I get concerned about though is what kind of plan do we have when it comes in a way of making sure? Because even when we talk about those amenities that Mr. Sims mentioned, oftentimes when those things happen, gentrification happens with it. Do we have any kind of plan, any kind of idea of how to protect gentrification from happening within that area? I was, I remember years ago, I was listening to a young lady speak at one of the events here locally, and she said you shouldn't have to change your zip code to change your situation. Well, I'll take a step further. You shouldn't have to move Well, I'll take a step further, you shouldn't have to move out of your zip code because your zip code's environment has improved. So, do we have any kind of thought of, or plan on how we can protect those, those people that live within those areas to be able to enjoy those amenities that they waited so long for?
We do, absolutely. I know gentrification is always kind of a really difficult conversation because you want enough investment to see things changing and things improving without so much that displaces people and things like that. So we actually do have a lot of conversations about that topic in the planning department. You know, a couple of examples, we've worked with the city's Neighborhood Affairs Department on neighborhood-first plans to ensure that the citizens who live in those neighborhoods have a say in what's happening in those neighborhoods, everything from what kind of land uses, what densities, things like that can happen, what allowable uses, and so really trying to work with the community to ensure that what happens on the South Side reflects what they want to see on the South Side. In fact, the South Side Action Plan is really focused around three core tenants, is beautification, investment, and then the third one is active engaged citizens. We want to make sure that the citizens who live there have a say, and when they have a say, you tend to avoid things like displacement and gentrification.
So is it, so I can, I can believe that citizens have a say won't displace them? I mean, in some ways, sometimes we ask for things, like Mr. Sims was saying, you ask for those eight-five, district eight-five-ohs and, you know, TGF Fridays and the nice restaurants and all that kind of stuff, and even, let's say, the new Columbia Gardens, there used to be Orange Avenue Apartments, the rethinking of the fairgrounds, the bus station, and all that good stuff. And we ask for those things, but we don't ask for it thinking, thinking that it's also going to increase the property values of those things that are surrounded by it. What I'm talking about is right across the street from Columbia Gardens, you have Appalachian Ridge right now, which is probably predominantly some rental in there, but I think it's, it's community that look just like me. I've often worried about how much those property values are going to increase once, once the bus station is done, the park right next to the store that wouldn't sell, the fairground is done, Orange Avenue is beautiful, what's going to happen in that neighborhood? You know, it's that, it's that kind of thing that I think we have to prepare ourselves for, and I think citizen input does help with that, but I think we got to go a step further. I just don't think citizen input will totally squash the thought that those property values are going to skyrocket in a way that the folks that live there can't afford it, in the way of if they're renting the rents, or if they're, if they're homeowners, the property taxes that come along with it. And I know, I think some homestead protects a little bit of that property tax jump that you may see. I'm just, I'm just really concerned. Now, I say all that and say I'm so excited about the growth and the one-point-one-one-billion dollars that's going into the South Side, I just want to balance that with caution that I, that ten years from now, I want to see the, the culture and the complexion of the South Side remain what it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Akaban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I address Artie? May I address Artie?
Yes.
First off, I want to say I love to see the investment on the South Side. Thank you all for bringing this agenda item to review. You know, I have a question. How, for Artie, how does annexations of county property to being in city limits, how does that help citizens of Leon County?
It helps a couple of different ways. One, it provides access to some of the services that the city offers. You can be in the county and get city utilities, but there is an additional fee, and so that fee would go away. You get to vote in city elections, so from a political kind of capacity standpoint, you have a little bit more political capacity. You would not only be voting for county commissioners, but you would also be voting for city commissioners as well. And then just kind of the, the ability to extend water and sewer and things like that, slightly different processes there, so, you know, being in the county is not a bad thing, I want to be clear about that, but there are some things that people who would want to develop a property or see certain things or vote in elections would get through annexation.
Thank you. So I have a couple of points just to discuss with the commissioners, but one, I think it's important for us to think about, you know, a lot of times I've, I've seen maps from where city limits started to how over time we've annexed properties, you know, and the city limits has expanded, and there's been less and less unincorporated area that the county oversees. And so one thing just to think about is when the city of Tallahassee annex a property, it's a significant increase on property taxes for residents, and with more property taxes comes the, an increase in cost of living, an increase in rent, landlords charge more rent. And I've asked some developers and builders, when they, when they do a project, why is it that they want to annex some of these properties from the county into the city limits? Because you would think with less, you know, from a developer's standpoint, they would want less taxes. A lot of the feedback that I've had is that it's easier to build and develop within the city limits than it is the county. And so I think it's something for us to discuss and think about as we move forward. We should want to, as a board, keep cost of living minimal for our constituents, and if there is a way where we could impact and change building code so that developers don't have to annex properties into the city, that we can keep taxes low for the citizens of Leon County, and that should be one of our main goals as a board. So thank you, Artie. A couple of things I would want to, additionally want to bring up is Pensacola Street is part of this South Side Action Plan based on this map, based on the area boundary, and I am very disappointed to see this, what's going on currently at Pensacola Street. I will say it, and I've said it over and over again over the last year and a half, I am very concerned for the future of Pensacola Street, especially after these recent tornadoes. I was already concerned before, but now with the, with the significant damage that has gone to the mixed-use buildings, apartment complexes, single-family homes, and businesses, I think now more than ever, we really need to take a deep look at Pensacola Street as part of the South Side Action Plan. Additionally, I would like to look at, when we have this workshop, Lake Munson, we have right now sewer conversion going to the northeast part of Lake Munson, but we're leaving out the east, south, and southwest part of Lake Munson, and with sewage running on one side of the lake, I think it, you know, it could be doable for us to look at expanding the sewer conversion so that it encompasses the entirety of Lake Munson. I think it would also be beneficial to the, the health of the lake, getting rid of septic tanks in that area. Additionally, our, the sewer conversion in Woodville, it doesn't go to West Woodville. It gets, you know, it goes a little bit west on Oak Ridge Road and stops, but it doesn't cross west into Oak Ridge Road, it doesn't have Waco Springs Road. There are a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of folks that, that don't have access to sewage, and this is not going to service them with sewage as well. And so we talked about the South Side Action Plan, this is a big conversation we additionally need to have. Lastly, public transportation. Woodville has no public transportation. We talk about the South Side Action Plan, we talk about access to services. As a board, what's the point of having all these services, nonprofits, if folks in our rural communities don't have access to them? I think we should look at, as we, as we move forward, how do we get bus routes for public transportation to Woodville? We really should look at also having it to the Fort Braving community. I know it's not part of the South Side Action Plan, but in Woodville specifically, there are a lot of folks that need services because there are some neighborhoods that are very low income, and they don't have transportation, there's no public transportation, and I think that part of these conversations we need to have moving forward is, we talked about the South Side Action Plan, but we need to get folks to services, and there are some big conversations that are still lingering out there as we move this forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Ban. Commissioner Proctodin, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the fairground project on attachment two, page nine of fifteen, who's Who's lead staff? Artie, I'm looking at the fairground beautification improvements on page, attachment two, page nine of fifteen, and it has the fairground beautification improvements, and it has plan and a status of thirty million dollars. But what would plan mean? How should I interpret that word?
That means that in the proposed budget for the Blueprint intergovernmental agency, there's thirty million dollars identified to go to implementing the improvements at the fairgrounds.
So what's the difference between planned and active?
There's a couple of things that have to happen before we can completely move forward with all the improvements. Those things like lease negotiations with the Fair Association, working with Leon County Schools on the Gene Cox part of the site, those things are happening right now, and as soon as those things are resolved, we can start moving forward with making investments in the fairgrounds. So they're planned because they're not happening today, but they'll be happening very soon.
Thank you. Looking at page eight of this agenda item, under the beautification improvement to the fairgrounds, and the write-up which you have listed there, I look at that as it corresponds with attachment two, and Commissioners, I wanted to say that I met with our chair of the Fairground Association a couple of weeks ago, and there's a desire for the conversation to broaden with respect to mutual roles being attained, mutual understandings. Artie just mentioned the lease, what happens when you're displaced, misplaced, got to go to another place, or what have you. And I believe I'm asking for a conversation, a sit-down with our board, in the fairground board, that we can have a mutual presentation, at least as to where we are right now, and I think that their concerns are not premature. We have a thirty-million-dollar project that says planned, and it's presented to us today as planned, and they believe that they have not been included, a voice has been an inclusionary voice in this word, planned. And I think that as that district commissioner and the lead advocate for this project for a number of years, I would love to see a broadening of the conversation, but we've gotten to this category of planned, and the people who sit on the property, I mean, I know we've got the word, I mean, we're comfortable because the word Tallahassee does not include the people who gave it the name. The people who gave the name Walco and Micasuki and Appalachia Cola, they're not around. But planned communities and cities got planned without the people sitting there. I believe we should include and have a sit-down with the fairground on this particular project in terms of South Side Action Plan. They should be a part of the plan, and we not, even though they, they hold this thing for a dollar a year, I think they're getting a great bargain. I still think that their voices should be included. So, staff, I'm asking, can we follow up with them, if this commissioner is willing to talk about those fundamental things which are their expectations for probably what, twenty-sixty-five or somewhere? And we're sort of talking about aborting or changing the, what their concept of a fairground has been. So there needs to be broader things too, Commissioner Maddox, with respect to opening up, because what staff has talked about, we have an opportunity to do something major. We still remain the only capital in the southeastern United States that lacks a conference center, a major conference center. Having attended a conference center, two of them recently, we have to go outside of Tallahassee to, to have a conference, and I think that we are missing an opportunity to do so. So, so a part of my reach right now is to expand in this action planning, the people who've been the custodians of the fairground for a reasonable amount of years, I'll say fifty at least, and blah, blah. Secondly, as my cousin Stanley pointed out, Sims, this is an action plan, and I need, you know, and I'm not sure it's our staff's responsibility, but looking at all of these projects, totality of one point some billion dollars, I need for us to understand that this South Side Action Plan is occurring, but we're also losing, we've lost, we have a food desert, we've lost Win Dixie, the Save-A-Lot food, we've lost, the Wells Fargo Bank is going to close down, Capitol, CVS, we have a pharmaceutical desert, CVS done left.
Save-A-Lot.
Huh?
Save-A-Lot.
Yep, Save-A-Lot, Walgreen left off of Magnolia, Eckerd's been left, everybody, but we have no place to purchase medicine, and, and, and the data, the data which we have indicates this is one of the highest concentration of our population who are on medications, and the CVS leaves. We're picking up another, acquiring a liquor store in exchange for the pharmacy. And I'm not sure this South Side Action Plan is not addressing, how do we sustain and put in a track through our office, O E V office? How do we incentivize this area to have, we got one private doctor down there, one, and you got to be sick to a certain level in order to see an endocrinologist? We don't have a family practice doctor in the area. So this plan is infrastructure focus. I'm trying to say that much like Sims was saying, the services, the availability of the fund station and Chuck E. Cheese's and these things that Wanda, you will never sit to hear me say again, unfortunately, but you've heard me over the years say, and that was a part of the vision of the South Side Fairground would perhaps be that point of destination, whether it was entertainment and a sit-down restaurant with a tablecloth on it, that does not exist, Madam Chair. So the lack of services, sit-down restaurant, movie theater, bowling alley, all of that stuff that exists in other areas, how do we induce, seduce, support? And when the bank closes the door and leave, and they're not losing any money, none of these people can say, they said that people were stealing. These people are not losing money, but they're still running away. So when Commissioner Maddox uses the word gentrification, that's strange, because if there's gentrification at the residential level, there's certainly white flight at the commercial level. So as commercial entities flee the area, homeownership changes, racial changes is occurring. It's the most dazzling flip-flop of things you've ever seen, and I've taken urban planning, but this exceeds anything that any courses I've had in urban planning have considered. All of this, what I'm saying, Artie, appreciative of this, I've made known to the community some time ago that I am a billion-dollar bill. You've never seen a billion-dollar bill, you're looking at me. For the investments that have come to this community, over twenty-eight years, I have beckoned for this kind of response. So that makes me a billion-dollar bill, Madam Chair. But the points that I've raised here today, that this right here, we got problems. But the points that I've raised here today, that this right here, we got problems with the services and all of that. And I think that that has to be integrated into our holistic effort, holistic, I like that holistic effort, to review and consider the success of bringing life and bringing it more abundantly to a South Side Action Plan. Those comments right there, I'll, and then final, the sewer improvement I'm most pleased with, and it's amazing, I shouldn't say this, Gary Jordan, our former Commissioner, said once we were dedicating, I don't know, Park or something, could have been the Gary Jordan Field, and said to me when I was a very young Commissioner, Mr. Caban, Jordan said, Bill, don't worry about it. We're gonna name the sewer plant after you one day. You're gonna have a public facility named after you. And do you know that we've called, Vince Long has almost brought so much sewer and I'm very excited about the Woodside Heights, Bel Air, Septic, the Sewer Project? I'm pleased about the Southern Triangle Sewer Expansion Project? And I was just sitting here thinking about all of these pipes underground, which I begged for and hollered, jumped up and down, wandered a long time. I hope Gary is not prophetic. I don't want my name on no sewer. Please don't do that, Mike. That's all I got to say, Madam Chair. Please don't do that.
Commissioner Proctor, let me ask you this and then we'll go to Commissioner Minor. There is a motion on the floor. Do you want to amend the motion to add options one and three, which was the workshop to address a lot of those issues that you raised about the South Side Action Plan?
If this Commissioner is willing to walk there, you know, it's taken twenty-eight years to see this glowing report, I realize it may be another twenty-eight, but I would love to include that, Madam Chair. It's a great recommendation if the make of a motion.
I believe Commissioner Maddox made the motion and it was second by Commissioner Proctor. Would you be interested in amending the motion or you let it stay as is and then we're here from Commissioner? Well, think about it, we're here from Commissioner Minor.
No, I mean, I'll take the mo, are we gonna specify what exactly the workshop? We workshop the whole thing?
Well, there was a few things that Commissioner Proctor mentioned. Well, the Fair Ground Association, their chairperson asked, and I met with them, not because I'm the Chairman of this Board, but because for so long I have been talking with them, talking about the project, that's the only reason not to overlook the Chair, the real Chair of our Board, that is something isolated.
But there are other issues that you raised that I think that could be flushed out. Mr. County Administrator, you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we did provide this option here for you, either this, the thinking was that either this presentation would suffice or the Board would make a determination that, no, you still wanted to have the workshop. When we have the workshop, of course, we'll provide an update like that which you've heard today and include any other additional information that the Board would like to add. But I do need to provide a clarification that the Fair Grounds Board has been actively involved in all conversations related to what we're doing. And so we're in that process, we'll continue along those lines and we'll be sure to bring back, at some point we'll be bringing probably lease modifications back to you or other agreements as we go along. But they've been actively involved so that we accommodate all of their needs on the, within the project as well as the larger objectives of the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Let me hear from Commissioner Minor and then we think about whether we just want the motion to stay on the floor to accept action. Number one, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me touch on a few things that have been said already. Commissioner Caban, you mentioned Pensacola Street and the need for the county, the city, the community to kind of take a look at Pensacola Street and basically resuscitate it, right? I agree with you. It's not in my district, but it doesn't matter. We all serve Leon County as a whole. And months ago, I met with someone that was investing on Pensacola Street, you know, for the college student demographic. And there was a lot of Hessen City there because of just the state of Pensacola Street. And so I agree with you. I mean, I've been focused a lot on North Monroe, rightly so, but I think a big effort for this community, not just the county, but the city and all of us should focus on Pensacola Street. Because the health of Pensacola Street has a direct effect on the students that come in from FAMU and FSU and recruiting those students and keeping those students. And that's a big part of our economy. So I would agree with you on that. Regarding the South Side Action Plan, I'm really, this is a terrific action item. There's a lot of things tonight that we have a lot to be grateful for, and this is one of them. Very excited to see the over one billion dollars in investment in the South Side. This is a huge, this is transformative to the entire community. I think it was about thirty minutes ago when Commissioner Maddox last spoke about gentrification concerns. I share those concerns. He's right to be concerned about those. And as a, as a community, we need to be very careful about that. In my humble opinion, trying to avoid displacement and avoid gentrification is one of the hardest things to do in public policy because you don't want to not invest, but you want to, you want to make sure that you're investing in areas that need it. That increases property values, but at the same time, the property values increase, you've got to increase incomes. And trying to achieve both of those at the same time so that you minimize the displacement of the people who live there is very hard to do. But that comes back to one of the earlier agenda items, which is O E V and M W S B E and the work that, the good work that's going on there to help close the disparity gap, close the disparity that exists in this town. Amazon, another great boost to us. We need to focus very heavily on what we can do as a community to raise incomes, to bring more high-quality jobs to this community. Because that, more than any other single thing, will help avoid what Commissioner Maddox has rightly brought up about gentrification. We don't want to not invest in the South Side. We need to invest in the South Side, but we don't, by investing, we don't want to displace those very people that we're meant to help. So that's really important, need to focus on job creation, higher wages. We have good people at the county and the city and O E V that are doing that, but it's something I think this body and Blueprint and the city need to talk about more often because that's the other side of the coin when it comes to the work that we do. Commissioner Proctor, you also mentioned about the lack of restaurants and services in the South Side. I agree with that, too. It comes back again to raising incomes. Because if we can raise incomes, if we can help folks in the South Side earn more, have higher-quality jobs, the private sector will step in and help us provide those restaurants and other services that you're talking about. So I just, I want to point that out. I felt it was very important because it's a, it's a big part of what I believe we need to be doing in local government. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the current motion on the floor right now?
Option one.
Option one. Commissioner Max, I was under the impression that there was, we were rescheduling the workshop as part of the motion. I still would like to have a workshop. You know, there are some actionable items that I think we need to look at. You know, listening to some of the conversations that Commissioner Maddox you brought up and Commissioner Proctor brought up, you know, one thing that can make an immediate impact on the South Side right now, on businesses and livelihood, is public transportation. You know, we talk about businesses not having the ability to survive on the South Side or going out of business or struggling. Well, there is a whole region on South Leon County and Woodville and surrounding areas that don't have public transportation. And the South Side is the closest destination to the folks that live on South Leon County. If there was a way for us to bridge that gap, we're talking about making an immediate impact on the South Side. I would like to have a workshop if it's the Board's will. You know, I just want to listen to what our Commissioners have to say about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. I believe it was your motion, correct, Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Do you want to?
That's fine. One and three is fine.
Do you want to amend it?
That's fine. Yes, ma'am. One and three.
And you second it? You're okay with that? So on the table, the motion is options one and three. And before we go to a vote, I just want to thank Mr. White, thank County Administrator and staff. I mean, this is a great report. One point thirteen billion dollar investment on the South Side. I think it's awesome. And it also shows collaboration between the city, county, Blueprint, as well as the private sector. I have concerns about the issues that have been raised. I'm not going to reiterate those, but I'm also very excited about the fact that we are looking at affordable housing, inclusionary housing on the South Side. And we know that housing, affordable housing is a big issue, not only on the South Side, but in the entire county and in the city. So I'm excited to see those, those projects being raised that will address a lot of those deficiencies with housing. So having said that, all those in favor of options one and three, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. So the motion was by Commissioner Maddox and it was seconded by Commissioner, Commissioner Minor. Mr. County Administrator?
Point of information on the last, what we just, point of information on number three, is that, what does that mean, number three?
Workshop. They recommended a workshop scheduled for September.
That will include the North Florida Fair Association?
That would include what, Commissioner?
That would include the North Florida Fair Association.
Oh, absolutely.
So we're sharing information simultaneously as to where we are, an update.
Everything from the South Side Action Plan, absolutely. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator?
Well, yes. I mean, all of the information we share, everything that we're currently doing with them, my only clarification is, is there a desire to have them, that Board, because what it sounds like you're saying is you want them to participate in the workshop?
No, no, no. I'll ask this Board for a sit-down meeting, unique and independent. Their concern is the Fair Association.
Okay, so you're asking for an additional meeting for that purpose? I'm just trying to.
I am. I don't know what these Commissioners are saying. I'm saying the Board.
Commissioners or just with staff?
The Commissioners that sit on this desk and those who serve as directors of the North Florida Fair Association, that we both are apprised. I've gone out to the dinghies over at Jack McLean Park, the boards around the wall and blah, 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 blah. Ain't nobody set us and the Fair Association down together. And I think that we have enough, I think it's time that we hold this conversation. Even legally, that we're prepared to talk about that lease, where they stand, where they think they stand, and all of those issues, political issues such as a potential to move the fairground from its location.
But bottom line is, you just want?
We have a sit-down meeting.
And I'm thinking, Mr. County Administrator, that it has to be noted if all the Commissioners are there, why don't we just do this at this workshop?
We certainly could. If that's the Board's direction, we could certainly do that. However, the Board would like to do that, we could, we could also, again, just another option for the Board, we could bring you back all of the information that we're currently working on with the fairgrounds. If that information is insufficient at all, the Board could also determine that you want to have another meeting. It's up to you. We could have that meeting. At the same time, we could do it separately.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I might. Mr. Administrator, what we want is a meeting, a joint meeting. Our ears as Commissioners, we're, we train, we hear different. The Fair Ground Association is less, you know, into all this paper and stuff. They got questions. We process this a little different, maybe than they do. So that we're respectful and the table is round. We could sit down out there and meet with them, that they may have a question on what these means. We may have a question on what the means.
So that sounds like workshop, right, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I think we understand that. We understand that.
I think, Mr. Administrator, I think that's gonna be a lengthy conversation to include into a workshop that talks about the whole South Side Action Plan. It sounds like what Commissioner Proctor is asking for is for us to have a sit-down, like you said, a sit-down conversation where we have all their Board members and our Board members here, we will go through and talk about what the future of the fairground looks like. Are you gonna be able to incorporate that and still, I mean, into an hour and a half session or are we talking about having two different workshops on the same, on the same day?
I like to see two different.
One specifically with the fairgrounds, another one with South Side Action Plan?
That's what I believe.
That's not what we, that's not what we voted on. I'm.
No, it's not. We voted on option three, which is one workshop.
Now, I do believe that we could have it that way. If we did a one-thirty and then the first part of that workshop being the conversation that Commissioner Proctor talked about and then the next part being the rest of the plan, we could do it that way. I just want to make sure that, that we understand where we're going from here.
And I think if we want two workshops, just bifurcated, we can schedule two meetings, one specifically with the fairground, another with the entire South Side Action Plan, then that would be more of a workshop, I believe, Mr. County Administrator. And then the other meeting would be just specifically on, on the fairground. I'm not, I don't think we have, I don't think we have to have another motion to do that.
Whatever the Board desires.
I think we do. The most known on the floor, the most known on the floor specifically is for a workshop on the South Side Action Plan. Now, Madam, Madam Chair, what I'm asking the County Administrator is, can you incorporate within that workshop a portion that specifically for?
Yes, we can.
Yes. So I would prefer that we do, we do it that way, but just make sure that there's a separate conversation that, that can accommodate what Commissioner Proctor's asking for, that you, that you create a period of time for. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So it'd be bifurcated within the same workshop?
Can I, can I use the word optics, optics, optics? I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, and I think it's good what you're, what you're talking about. It's hard to take two women on the same date. I mean, you might use one credit card for one and take out another credit card to pay
So you want two separate workshops, two separate dates? Commissioner Proctor, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm trying to say. And all I'm saying is that it's hard for the Fair Association to feel we have their undivided, they got our undivided. And I think that we should not play them into a grouped meeting when they're asked of me was to sit down with us, specifically with us.
It's not a group meeting.
Huh?
It's not a group meeting. It, it, it's, it's, we don't have to make a separate motion. Back in the day, we used to have a workshop at one-thirty, we had one at three o'clock. The one-thirty would focus on one thing, the three o'clock would focus on the other. What I'm suggesting here is that we got a one-thirty set, the first half of that one-thirty, however much the County Administrator says, focused specifically on the fairground, the next part is SAP.
I heard the word incorporate. And you can't incorporate two women at the same time.
It's two different conversations, but one will inform the other.
Okay, let me have, let me have the County Commissioner Proctor.
Ma'am?
I think that the County Administrator can clarify that we can do it that way. I don't, I don't think we'll be commingling it, Mr. County Administrator.
Sure. The only thing I would, I would just throw out there, just for the Board's consideration, and again, we hear you, you want to have the meeting, we're very happy to facilitate that and we can absolutely do it. Couple of things I would just throw out there. Obviously, once again, we're actively involved in the design of that project with the fairground. So they know where we are. We're actively considering all their input in the design, accommodating their needs, all of that. The other thing that I just want to add a little word of caution to is we will eventually be in active conversations about a lease agreement. It's generally not something that we would engage with the Board on active negotiations about a lease, nor do I think that would be advisable. So we just have to be a little cautious about, about that. Again, I think we could accommodate the meeting. I don't think that will be a problem, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. All minds clear on that? Okay, Mr. County Administrator, thank you so much. We're gonna move to the next item, number eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number eighteen, as requested by the Board on May fourteenth, this item seeks consideration of two funding requests. The first is a six thousand dollar funding request to support the Henry Hill Foundation. Again, pursuant to your policy, it would come back to you as it has today as an agenda item. The second is a one thousand dollar request from the Capillary Chapter of One Hundred Black Men of America for their annual scholarship gala. Funding for these requests are not included in the FY twenty-four adopted budget. If approved by the Board, funding is available in your general fund contingency to support each of the requests. We're seeking your direction. We have no speakers on this item. Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Proctor?
I brought this Board members and you directed me to bring this back as a budget item and specifically Commissioner Minor had strong concerns. I'm grateful that we've done it this way and I move.
Commissioner Proctor, let's do a motion.
Yeah, I move option one and option two, consistent with my Board's directive. Thank you.
Is there a second? Thank you. Now, discussion?
I'm good.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Hearing none. Any, Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number nineteen seeks the full Board's. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number 19 seeks the full board's consideration of appointments to the Citizens Architectural Review Board, the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission, as well as the Leon County Minority Business and Small Business Enterprise Citizens Advisory Committees. Option one seeks your reappointment of Elena Bradbury, James Butler, and Miriam Gurneak to the, to the Architectural Review Board for a three-year term. And all of the, again, information is, and eligible applicants are provided for you in each of the recommendations before you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I think we need to take each.
Move option one?
Look at staff, staff recommendation. Is there a motion for option one?
He moved.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox moves option one.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Caban moves option one.
He moved a second.
Yes.
And for the purposes of our clerk, they told me before the meeting, they need to be clear on who's making the motions and who's seconding. And that's why I try to reiterate it. So option one, staff recommendation by Commissioner Maddox, second by Commissioner Caban. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I will accept a motion for option two as well.
Move George Reynolds.
No, I'm sorry. Let me go back to option one. There was also an indication where the applicant requests a waiver. We have to move that separately, Madam County Attorney.
No, Madam Chair. Typically, as long as the vote passes with a two-thirds vote, that's sufficient to also.
Oh, awesome. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move George Reynolds, number two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Maddox. Move by Commissioner.
Proctor.
Oh, who? Oh, Minor, okay. Is there a discussion? No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Proctor move George Reynolds, second by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Option three.
I move option three.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Minor, second by Commissioner Caban. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's unanimous. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes your agenda. We do have one speaker to be heard on non-agenda items. Evelyn Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Hi. My name is Evelyn Johnson. I live at 1523 Mary Oaks Court, M-E-R-R-Y Oaks Court. I bought my house in 2016. My house flood, my yard floods. She's going to try to put a picture of my backyard up on the screen. I know that the city of Tallahassee owns the holding pond that's at the end of, of Golden Park, and there's one at the end of Fred Smith. There's a hole that goes under the street, and the county owns a ditch that the runoff is supposed to go into. That runoff is completely full of debris, refrigerators, tires, and what have you. I've already talked to the city of Tallahassee, and they are going to fix the drainage on Fred Smith. I need Leon County to fit, clean out that ditch so that my backyard doesn't look like that. Spending eight to 10 hours cleaning up the water in my house is ridiculous. Plus, we've got five to seven houses that flood every time we have a really bad rain. So the rain that we had in April, my house flooded. I had an inch of water in my house. My brand-new bed, his frame is ruined because of water. I need help. All I'm asking is for the ditch to be cleaned out so that us on Mary Oaks won't flood. We all know that water goes downhill, and I've been told that so many times from the city of Tallahassee. And I'm really not in the mood to hear that water goes downhill. I know that. But if everybody takes care of what needs to be taken care of, then my house won't flood. This was my forever home. I waited until I was in my 50s to buy my home. And I can't sell my home because I would have to tell them that my yard floods, my house floods, and everything else floods. So I just need help.
Madam Chair, do we get to react to speakers at this point?
Not at this point. I don't think we.
We can't?
We don't. But we will. If you're done, we'll get your information.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Point of information, Madam Chair, this is the portion of the agenda where we do respond to speakers.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you.
I would like to say that, just looking at a picture, I'm, you know, causation is, in terms of responsibility, but I would, that she's come down here, that we find out the address. We did have a tremendous storm. And I, I just don't think that we automatically liable because she said some water was in the backyard. But if we can look into what shaped this flooding episode, I would love to see our administration take.
We will, we will do that. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we'll do that. Ms. Johnson, we've got your name and address here. We'll be following up with you tomorrow on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good.
So this is, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. This is the part of our agenda where we can discuss issues with speakers that come forth. Was there any other speakers, Mr. County Administrator?
Madam Chair, that concludes your speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam County Attorney, do you have any items?
No, Madam Chair, I have nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, I was going to bring it up early, but I, I think this is probably the proper time to do it. As I was listening to some of the conversations we were having today, they're much different than some of the conversations we have, we were having in the past. In particular, Commissioner Caban, when he talked about the expansion of the Urban Services area, not Urban Services area, the expansion of city, city limits through annexation, and why, why builders and developers tend to do that. It's really because we don't have the capacity as an organization to, to really provide an infrastructure that those folks are looking for, for the, for the intensity of the development that they, that they, they're doing. For example, we don't have a water, we don't have access to water. That's Taquen. We don't have access to electricity. That's Taquen, in the unincorporated area. And then Commissioner Proctor, when you were talking about too, the 1 to 3 versus 1 to 10, I think one thing that we have to, we have to really be considering and think about as we move forward is, what's our capacity as an organization to provide urban-type infrastructure and within those areas, within rural areas? 1 to 3, probably, probably, probably ask for infrastructure that would be more on the lines of a Taquen or a city, city electoral sewer that we, that we simply don't have the capacity to provide. So, and, and then, like I said, with the apartment buildings too, what I wrote down is the future of infrastructure and services when it comes to Leon County. Who are we going to be 10 years from now when it comes to infrastructure services? Are we going to be able to provide those things? Are we going to be? Because one time I was talking to, and I'll, I'll wrap this up, Madam Chair. I was talking to Pam Hall, God rest her soul, one time. And, and we were talking about the, the, looking, looking at the Urban Services area and the plan and all that good stuff. And I said, Pam, I said, you know, what I see five, 10 years from now, I said, I really see Bannerman, Bradfordville becoming their own jurisdictions, their own, their own cities. I saw Woodville being contained to be their own city, city, and Fort Braden as well. And what she said, Nick, she said, Nick, that's going to be very hard. I said, well, why? It doesn't make sense. I said, you know, each one of those areas have their own character. What we will call them now towns instead of cities within the rural, rural areas. I said, so why wouldn't it? And she said, because it would be hard for those folks to incorporate because where are they going to get the power from? Where are they going to get the sewer from? Incorporation is all about encompassing services that the rural area simply, I mean, I'm sorry, the county and the unincorporated jurisdiction really just can't, don't have the capacity to, 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 to give to those areas. And so I think, I'm all for, I'm all for the conversation. If we really want to look at more intense development within the, I wouldn't say the rural, rural areas, because we're going to pack chambers out with, with folks who are really, really, really big on environmental, environmental stuff. But those things that are touching, those areas that are touching the city limits or the Urban Services area that aren't quite in the city limits, that are still in the county, if we want to talk about, well, what can we provide that might keep a, a developer from, from annexing into the city, because we are the county and we like to be able to provide those services? I want to have the conversation. I just think it's a, I think it's, it's, it's something that we're years away from. And all the times I've been here, we, we talked around it, but I think subconsciously, we all kind of knew that we really didn't have the infrastructure as an organization to provide it. And if we're going to move in that direction, I think it's something strategically, we're going to have to plan for it because right now, we're just not ready for it. And I look forward to you seeing you guys at the budget workshop. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And I apologize, I omitted our great county administrator, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. I want to talk briefly about, about the Southern Rail Commission and Amtrak. Last Friday, June 7th, I, I went to, I drove to Mobile, Alabama to a scheduled public meeting of the Southern Rail Commission. And if you all remember, the Southern Rail Commission is a group of three-member states, Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana, who were formed, formed the SRC as an act of Congress. They had been working for years on promoting rail along those three Gulf states, in part to restore passenger rail. So sometime within the next year, a new route between Mobile and New Orleans is going to be operating twice daily between those two cities by Amtrak, which is terrific, because once that becomes operational, we're going to see ever more apparent the need for rail to come through North Florida, hopefully through Mobile, to Pensacola, Tallahassee, and Jacksonville, and then down to South Florida. So they've, they've had some issues with the city of Mobile and state Alabama trying to figure out how they're going to fund some upgrades to the Mobile train station, but it looks like they're moving forward on those. The good news is that it looks like those three-member states are going to be making some real progress on restoration of passenger rail. What we'd like to do is, is, and I'll, I'll come to the commission at a future date, is, is urge our governor or state legislature to join the SRC. That will require the governor and legislature agreeing to it. They have basically applied to the SRC, and then the SRC has to approve it. And then it goes to the three state legislators of those member states. So it's kind of a long, drawn-out process, but that is generally viewed as, as the first, next best step on getting us to the point where we will restore passenger rail. Because the SRC has the capability of asking the federal government for transportation dollars at a much greater degree than simply one state. So that's, that's something that, I'll come back at a future meeting to talk with, with you all about that in more detail. But I wanted to seek approval from the county commission on the reimbursement of my travel expenses to that trip. Didn't fly, didn't stay in hotel, just to drive and some meals. So I was hoping that I could have a motion to approve that.
Sir. You should have stayed somewhere really nice.
What's that?
You should have stayed somewhere really.
Oh, I didn't want to use taxpayer dollars to give a hotel to a room.
On the floor is that we reimburse Commissioner Minor for his travel to the, yes.
Just miles and meals, that's all.
Out of his own travel account, of course.
Move Commissioner Maddox, second Commissioner Caban. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections?
Thank you, ma'am. Brief update on Railroad Square. As you know, along with the tornadoes, it devastated a lot of District 2 and District 1. We had a lot of damage at the Railroad Square Art District. A lot of folks, a lot of folks are talking with the owners right now, trying to figure out some way to find a financially sound approach to retaining as much of that art district as possible. So just wanted to mention that. Another point, during, earlier at this meeting, during the Citizens to Be Heard section, Mr. Max Epstein, a citizen, insinuated that I wasn't being truthful when I said at an earlier meeting that I had met with him many times. According to our records, I had scheduled meetings with Mr. Epstein at least nine times between January 29 and December 22, 22. So just wanted to put that on the record. What I said was consistent with what I said at that earlier meeting. And then finally, just wanted to pray for Commissioner O'Keefe and his family during this really difficult time. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I don't really have any business to discuss. Mr. County Administrator, just want to confirm, our private roads assistance program coming back next meeting?
Yes.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you so much. Next, I have two birthday shout-outs. Shinkton, happy late birthday. Commissioner Minor, happy early birthday. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Proctor?
I want to thank Mr. Latner and his wife, Ms. Servantes, for coming out tonight earlier and hopefully looking forward to resolution to the issues that you brought forward. We're very sensitive to you all being treated, you know, correctly, fairly through the processes of Leon County to make sure. I mean, we're all human beings, and if we've had any miscues, missteps, we're not an organization that's so arrogant that we, we can't acknowledge our, our miscues and try to make right if we've made any steps that were not correct. So thank you all for being here. I'd like to request a resolution for Race Amity Day for the Baja Church, which recognizes race amity and to present it at our next meeting. That my motion?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioners, I request a resolution recognizing Ms. Olean's, for Olean's restaurant and the meals free, which she presented to the community along the same time during the hurricane of April, I mean, the tornado, was it April 11th, May 11th?
May.
May 11th, yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor of that resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Aye.
I want to thank, and want to like to, to secure resolutions honoring the bond of neighborhood health centers and Dr. Rick LaHart, who provide timely, needed, and almost isolated care to the citizens of the South Side. That's motion.
All those in favor of the request for the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Aye.
I want to thank our county attorney for being so responsive. I've called you county attorney, and you, you're just a wizard. And come through, and I just want for the, for the, for the scribbler record to note that our county attorney is pretty amazing, and shout out there. Wanda Hunter, Lord have mercy. I, I can't, 35 years, congratulations. I can truthfully say, I really don't think I've been to a meeting that you wasn't sitting up in. And it's going to be weird, you not being in county commission meetings, you guys. I mean, it's weird. And we wish you well, you did so early. But at least in your retirement, you won't have to hear, you know, me, this broken record going around and around and around. And God bless you in your retirement. I want to thank you for the very comforting news that was shared coming from the county administrator. Mr. Administrator, I want to thank you for this update of Crawfville Road to Wallcolor County Line. And it, it's in the, in the design right away, and seems like it's moving quickly as a CRPTA high priority. And I also appreciate learning, Commissioner Minor, you'd appreciate that the Woodville Highway project is priority number one, which is great. Crawfville, which is an emergency evacuation route. I thank you guys for pushing hard. Crawfville Road is a number-two priority. Hit two is an emergency evacuation route with 11 hurricane schedule for this year. We're going to need it. The Orange Avenue is good news, number three. And Crawfville Road, you know, the writing just faded, is a number four. It's two, two segments, the Crawfville Road. So I appreciate for our team members who own the CRPTA, I think three of you are, and that you're representing on that regional board in pilliness to fruition. It makes this commission feel very good. Thank you all so much. The Taquen letter, receive. The Taquen letter, receive that they could not do anything, but I think that, as we discussed earlier, our effort to be proactive with a mini-grant system would benefit a Rochelle, have I forgot something? Seem like it. Okay. All right. I trust my aide. That's one thing I do do. I trust my aide. She said I have nothing else. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Rochelle. And thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor. Briefly, I'd like to express the sentiment for Commissioner, Mr. Latner, Ms. Chavez that are here, and I'm glad to know that our county administrator is on top of that issue. He's been out to the residence, and there's follow-up going on. So you're in good hands. Commissioners, I'd like to request a proclamation for Mr. Henry Murphy, who was a longtime educator in Leon County. He is turning 100 years old. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Secondly, I'd like to recognize CMR. Our county administrator last week sent us a memo very excited about the fact that the National Association of Counties has recognized Leon County with eight more national achievement awards, and I think it's certainly worth mentioning, mentioning. And he indicated that with this eight, it brings Leon County to a total of 111 national achievement awards over the last 10 years. So I think it just, it's certainly an indication of the great job that our county employees do. But I just want to mention those projects. The crosswalk to classrooms on Dempsey Mayo Road, and it's right in front of WT Moore Elementary School, and many of us were there for that initiative that was, when it was rolled out. The historic Amtrak building renovation and site reconstruction, and I think it did receive a little damage during the storms, but that will be repaired. The Leon County Tallahassee Baskett Tenure Celebration, the Septic Upgrade Incentive Program, Combating Food Insecurity, EMT to Paramedic Training Program, Commissioner Minor, the North Monroe Revitalization Efforts, and then, of course, Risk and Safety Management enhancements. So all of those initiatives were recognized, and the crosswalk to classrooms in front of WT Moore was designated as the best in its category nationwide. And I think that deserves a round of applause. I think we need to applaud all of them, though. Nationwide, that is awesome. But thank you, guys, for all of your hard work, and it makes the county look really, really good. I'd like to also, he's very modest, but I'd like to recognize our county administrator. His daughter, Riley, graduated from high school this year.
We didn't think it was going to happen.
We didn't think it was going to happen. We want to congratulate him on her graduation, and one of the secrets he kept is that she was also one of the 25 young women, you need to know, that was chronicled in the Tallahassee Democrat this year. So that was quite an achievement for her. She's all-around young lady, and we certainly wish her the best. So congratulations, Mr. County Administrator.
She does do what I ask.
She does. Finally, I would like to, let me make sure I've got everything. I'd like to wish all of the fathers in the room a happy Father's Day. Father's Day is coming up this Sunday, and we don't know what we would do without our fathers. So thank you all for all you do for us, and we hope that each of our fathers will enjoy a great Father's Day weekend. That's all I have. If nothing further--
When is our next meeting?
Commissioner Proctor.
When's our next meeting? July 9th? When is, when is NACO?
When is what?
NACO. NACO meeting.
Week after next? No, it's this week.
NACO.
Oh, NACO. I'm thinking of the other one. Right.
Yeah, I think it's around the 12th. So we will meet again before NACO.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. If nothing further, meeting is adjourned.